All right, can I have a motion to open the work session?
I move to open the work session. Session.
All in favor? All right, so again, welcome to our work session of Tuesday, October 24th, 2023. We are going to jump right into a discussion of resolutions with regard to the NJ Zero Special Permit. So Eric and Sabrina, would you like to walk us through the few minor changes to the resolutions?
Up to you, Eric.
Yeah, I can, I can take you through the neg deck and the, the resolutions, thank you. So you have the final form of neg deck and two resolutions that are being considered tonight. The final form of neg deck, so the first changes, the first change in the neg deck is on page five of the neg deck, we eliminated the reference to the Phase One Environmental Site Assessment. And I'll give you a little bit more information to that once we go through the final changes on the document. The next change on page nine, we just added Westchester County Planning Board in two places. And there was a change in the date of the letter from the Westchester County Planning Board pursuant to GML Section 239, that date was October 16th. So that's in the final form of the resolution. We also added on page, on page 10, well, that's actually 10 of the final form. There's the letter from, there were two letters from Creighton Manning, one dated October 20th and one dated October 23rd that addressed some of the traffic and parking issues. They respond to some of the AKRF and submissions from the public regarding parking and go through the response regarding the overnight parking requirements to those letters. So those are part of the record that's been reviewed by the town board. The next change was with respect to land, the, the land reference. And I believe it's page 12 and 13 of the final form. The, again, the reference to the Phase One Environmental Site Assessment prepared by the applicant was deleted from the document in that section.
Just to confirm, that's because since we're going to require Phase Two, the Phase One really is not necessary.
Right, I'm, I'm just gonna give a review of that once I, but it's going through because it's in another place too. And I would be, can answer any questions that the board has. The next change is in, on page 14 of the final form. It's the storm, under Storm Water, Waste Water and Drinking Water. Under the paragraph beginning currently drainage flows, there's been a sentence added saying, since these improvements have been made, the property and the town's drainage system, oh, sorry, oh, sorry. It's, uh, I'm looking through online, I'm just looking for where it is on this one, in the final one. So yeah, it starts out, in addition, right, the Metro North Railroad Drainage.
It's page 14 of 42.
Right, they're surrounding their, in addition, the Metro North Railroad Address Drainage surrounding their train tracks, since these improvements have been made, the property or the town's drainage system in proximity of the property have not exhibited flood. So that's been added to the document. There's some minor changes to page 21 of the document. There was a closing of a quotation mark in one of the paragraphs, it's, it's on actually page 20 of the final document. There was a closing of the quotation mark in orientation. Then going on in page.
Thirty-four of 42. There was a, a missing letter.
Yeah, there was just a missing R in the paragraph beginning, the NJ Special Permit Requires. So that was just a minor typographical error. Number 15 on page 37, sorry, 37 of the final, or I'm just seeing my pages here. Page 36 of the final document, socioeconomics was spelled, socioeconomics was spelled incorrectly. So that change was made in the final document. And then the final change is in par, in section 18, dealing with human health, which is on pages 39 and 40 of the final document. Again, there was a deletion of the reference to the Phase One Environmental Assessment. And then there was a revision that talked about, after the first paragraph under human health, it said, based on the environmental assessment form and associated information, there has been no evidence of soil contamination on the site. If and when an application is filed for the development of property, under the special permit, the applicant will be required to satisfy minimum requirements for identifying the potential for contaminated soil and groundwater on the project site. This includes undertaking a Phase Two analysis, including additional testing to evaluate the presence or absence of petroleum products or hazardous substances in the site's subsurface, be conducted to ensure that historic uses have not adversely impacted the subsurface conditions at the project site. A Phase Two analysis will be conducted as part of the future special permit application process. This additional testing is routinely conducted as a project is further developed in regards to geotechnical investigation and borings. So that, that change was also, those are the, the changes to the neg deck that were made. And just to clarify, it was determined after analyzing the materials and assessing the documents that a, this board would not be, was unnecessary to consider and rely upon the Phase One because the board is in fact requiring a Phase Two analysis as part of the phase, as part of the special permit application, assuming one is filed, that will require soil borings and a much more in-depth environmental review of the property. Since this proposed action that's being reviewed is the legislation itself, which just allows an additional type of development on the site. There's already as of right development allowed on the site that could result in, that may result in environmental, you know, in Phase Two being done or a review of environmental, underground environmental conditions being done. It was not necessary in order to, for this board to rely on the Phase One in order to provide its analysis that there is no, you know, no environmental impact from this legislation, especially since there's a Phase Two that is going to be required as part of any special permit before any development can take place. So that's why the change was made with respect to the Phase One and it was not necessary to rely on the Phase One at this point. You also have the resolutions in front of you, which I think delete just the, they add the additional documentation that's being considered and they delete the reference to the Phase One again. But that, I think that was really the only change since last week on the resolutions itself.
So the public understand, is it fair to say a Phase Two is more enhanced, more in-depth than a Phase One?
Oh, it's way, it's much, it's much more intrusive. It requires actual testing of the soils and borings of the soil, whereas Phase One does not require intrusive testing of any soils or, or the property itself.
And theoretically, if, if it stayed as is and someone built upon what was already existing, they wouldn't have to do that.
Not if they're not doing any intrusion into the ground, potentially, if they didn't, you know, it would be an as of right development that may not even require a secret review if they're not changing anything in the building. If they're just putting in a new use in the building, it might not even require a secret review. It might be considered a Type Two at that point, you wouldn't have any secret review of it.
Right, so no matter what, we'd get built on that site.
Right.
Two stories, three stories, or we would be in the same place.
Right, as long as, as long as it was subject to, as long as it was either an unlisted, and I apologize for interrupting, go ahead.
No, that's, that's.
Yeah, as long as it was subject to the, the environmental review, if Phase Two, you know, could be, would be required for doing development or maybe required for doing development. I don't, I can't speculate as to all the levels of development. But if it's being developed with a special permit under this legislation, it's gonna require a Phase Two, so.
And depending on the results of a Phase Two analysis, the, if, if any sort of contamination was, was revealed, the developer is bound under state law to remedy, is that correct?
They would be, they would be required to remediate, I mean, they'd be by law now, you know, whether, you know, they, they would be required to remediate, put it that way. There are, you know, there would have to be a legal process that they would go through if they don't want to. But they would be required to remediate it, so.
And the DEC oversees it.
Right, the DEC would oversee that and require the owner or any prior owners to actually be responsible for remediating as well, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't know Sabrina, if you wanted to add anything with respect to the requirements on the cleanup of the site, so.
No, I think you covered it very well, thank you, Eric.
All right, so I think we can move to the next topic.
The next topic on our agenda.
Do you want me to wait for the, for the regular meeting or you're okay with?
Oh, I don't care.
What if questions?
All right, I can, I'll wait around for the.
Okay, oh, oh, yeah, we know, we'd like you to stay with the regular meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, yes, definitely.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is the review of the Catalyst Contract. So this is, we've mentioned it last week, this is the successor agreement to TAC. So this is the foundational document, foundational contract that runs our soft, our assessment software that then feeds into our tax, the tax programs. They've been working on this, on getting an update to this software for seven, since 2017. It is $22,000 for annual support and hosting and $13,000 for conversion of 10 years of historical data. And it's been phased through capital. When it comes to expenditures over $10,000, we bring them to the board so that they're aware of our, the budget for expenses and where the money is being spent and how it is ever planned, thank you.
Thank you, seems like it's an investment.
Yeah, the next thing, the property maintenance notice, they're actually not ready for it. We're gonna table that and it'll be on November 28th. The next is the Nicoled Dam duty agency notice. It's not really here. So as the board is aware, we have been in the midst of decommissioning the Nicoled Dam. And we are finally getting closer to actually doing the work. This will require a secret review and it will, a super process and it will require the town board to be duty agency for this process. And it's just a review for the board. We will be decommissioning the dam, that means draining the water out of it. We will need to test the sediment to see whether or not it can stay on the property or has to be removed. And then just the plan to take and re-plant the area and basically restore it to its original, not for sale. The next is a series of administrative items. So payment of claims, adoption of minutes from September 2023, adoption of monthly reports from September 2023. And let me hand out to you the resolution authorizing the town of Newcastle to establish ROESAP, which is the Right of Service Program, and this is Christina. So we, we have spoken of this before, it is the actual resolution that needs to be approved by the board this evening. It requires, even after this resolution is approved, the state law requires a mandatory referendum. So it means that we will be holding a special election. It's scheduled to be on Wednesday, December 6th. It will be here at Town Hall, we'll have a single polling place from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Christina will be running the election. Yay, I will be something, I promise. We have, you know, ordered machines, we've ordered books, we've ordered, we're, we're election inspectors. Let's see, the monthly service award payment that we are proposing is equal to $20 a month for each year of service award program, which would be $240 per year for your service. Yeah, what else should I mention?
Yeah, it's just as, as part of this, the next step will be, once, assuming you adopt this, the next step will be to have the actual proposition that will be part of the ballot for December 6th. So that will happen at your next meeting, so work on the pen flex for that language, but it, sometimes.
Very specifically.
Very specific and oftentimes you see in the same resolution, but it's not necessary. But that's the next step, because I guess they're still working on the numbers and figures. So I understand that will come either tomorrow or this week, I understand. We'll take that and then craft it into a resolution, which proposition on it at your next meeting and will still be in time for December 6th, I think.
So that will be on Wednesday, the 8th.
Correct.
Okay, so the special election is to be on December 6th?
Yes, it's a Wednesday.
Time?
It goes 7:00 AM to 7:00.
Yeah, 7:00 AM to 7:00.
Okay. Such a Google version.
Kind of a normal.
Yeah, this is not subject to secret, it's Type Two, so just, just go with it. Nothing more to be done on that front.
The next is authorization to use town property. We will bring this, we're looking to set up tables outside the Chappaqua Farmers Market for charity event, a cancer fund user. Next is approval of a Halloween block holiday on Patatash. Authorization to obtain bids for a recreation field, in-field project. They're hoping to renovate the field and have it with Christine for next year. DPW is actually asking the board for a noise waiver. We're doing the new wood water treatment project and we're, we did just start a little bit earlier. So allowing us to start at 7:00 AM, so we can try to get a bid.
For how long? Two days. Monday to Friday and Saturday if necessary.
Other than the, the club there, can, there aren't too many homes around there, right?
Well, Chester, Chester Oaks is right across the street, so they. The thing is, is that DPW is up and working, oh, I'm sorry, this is really working. Yeah, yeah.
Where are these little voices coming from?
There was soccer outside, so maybe they're. Yeah, I don't think there are any homes really around, no water treatment.
No, I think Chester, Cabin Ridge may be the closest street, so that's actually that.
Yeah, okay.
No.
And you've got the state DOT yard and the DOT regular yard that.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, social stuff like that, those operations start at 7:00 in the morning, so. And the Tacoma is pretty busy by now as well. Okay, let's see, what else we have to. Next is authorization to approve the annual service and support contract, which is DNR, a really unfortunate happening, but it's our contract. It's a terrific center who takes and makes sure that the lighting, that the sound system, movie screen, things like that, or operational, the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center. Next is authorization to use town property for an Eagle Scout project. They'd like to do a book collection, so it's gonna be a big fan accessible in the, in the lobby. We'd like to extend a contract bid for the sidewalks, no removal for the Chappaqua County Parking District. It's written in the papers. We've been really happy to get the option to renew for another year. Next is authorization to accept a proposal for supplemental services for the chap line. This is for our consultant partner, the Javis, Lee Jones, who's actually is gonna be speaking with the board of ed later this evening on her behalf and in exchange of that. So for, for her time to be able to take and do that, we just need another agreement on that. Authorization to accept the annual contract for impact records management system. This is the, the records management system for police and it's just our annual contract again, although along the pricey side, so we bring it to the board. It's a $40,000 annual, you know.
But we've.
Absolutely, yeah. Next is authorization to use town vehicles for ski jumps. This is an authorization that usually comes from, through me, but whenever we have a vehicle that goes ahead any, the specific authorization. So certainly they have, like this is so that there could be a separate car that drives along with the buses. Authorization to approve our partners in safety agreement. This is drug and alcohol testing and also free employment discounts for us there. Next is better request for Community Day, Eric is very efficient.
Wow.
That's a problem.
It's unbelievable.
He called me the day after to find out if we had a date.
Right, September 14th, right?
Yeah.
All right, because it's going up the week of the 7th, so there you go. Next is authorization to approve the 2023 Shared Services INA. We have a grant that we fly for with 18 other, it's a total of 18 municipalities in Westchester County for the grant for this recycling app that's on our, on the phone. We'll find out whether or not, who takes, accepts a particular item for recycling. If it's not a recycling center, then the recycling center. And conventional wisdom is this, that really helps with, to increase recycling when people know where to bring their stuff. Next is authorization to use town property, that's the garden code. They'd like to use Amsterdam to take and do their youth education. It's gonna be November 26th through the 28th.
And where are they doing that?
On the second floor. There's an, in the building, but they, they will be dry and protected from the elements, so they know that. So they will dress for them.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I already got approval from, from Tom DeColle, that he's okay with, they can get in no more than 12 people and we'll, we'll make sure that we cover a spot for them. Authorization to approve node to grant contract. So these are pass-through expenditures for Newcastle United Youth. They're required to have it approved by the board after their board approves expenditures.
But we don't actually.
The money does not come from the town. They have a separate $125,000 range.
It's just kind of the administrator.
Yeah. Next is authorization to obtain, approve a change order for Getney Park. This is unusual because it's an underrun, so the contract is actually less.
What would not happen?
What would not happen? But, but.
I don't think I've ever seen that happen.
It is, it is a rare occurrence, it's called an underrun, just in case anybody. Next, somebody has a.
I'm just kidding, it's a horn.
At a cocktail party, it's not an overrun, it's an underrun. Next is authorization to support WEMS in the purchase of, the purchase, well, I guess, you know, the purchase of the additional fraud car as of June 24th. We spoke about this last year and the board agreed that it was an important expenditure and we were able to, Rob was terrific and was able to find money in the budget for it. So as of June 2024, we will have another fraud car, which will reduce response times of our, of our ambulances, which is great.
And for the.
The other municipalities.
I don't even know if it's actually a car that does fly.
The municipalities also approved this for the six months.
Yes, and when is the source?
Tomorrow.
Okay, when is it?
Tomorrow, the meeting is tomorrow morning, so, just so that we can tell them that we have formally approved the resolution. And the last thing is an informational memo regarding missing recreational vehicle. So just so the board is aware, we are very serious about our procurement policy and when we have expenditures that are over X amount of dollars, depending upon what it is, we go out and we get multiple bids. This happened to be a situation where we brought a truck to be fixed. It was under the threshold, when they got it up on the list and they started looking at it, we, they realized that whatever needed to be fixed, because there was a whole lot more wrong. So instead of taking and bringing the truck, at that point, the truck couldn't be brought back. We reprinted the, the additional expenditure, it just being fixed, the truck had to be operational. It ended up being, you know, over $10,000, which was something that we would normally never approve without multiple bids, but this was a, an odd situation, so we couldn't, but I did want to bring it to the full situation.
Joe, is that meant to be in the consent agenda? Or is that a separate resolution?
No, I don't know if it's really the question. Because I don't, I just don't.
Um, you know, when it's a money expenditure.
Oh, we weren't gonna approve that, remember?
Oh, it's not an approval, it's just an information.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys. And that is all I have for administrative items and all the rest. Is there any questions, anyone? No?
Okay, clear. All right. Can I second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you everyone, we're gonna move to the town board meeting. Thank you. Okay, welcome everybody to the town board meeting of Tuesday, October 24th. Can I please have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open the meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are going to actually start the meeting instead of announcements. We are going to start it with something very exciting. At this time, I want to welcome to the meeting tonight the members of the Polly Cooper Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. The chapter was established on May 5th, 2017 in Chappaqua. And the Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, non-political volunteer service organization comprising 3,000 chapters worldwide, founded with the purpose of preserving the memory and spirit of those who contributed to securing American independence. The Polly Cooper Chapter accomplishes this by supporting initiatives in patriotism, education, literacy, historic preservation, conservation and genealogy research. So members of the chapter are here tonight to present a community service award to our very own Marion Williams for her contributions to the town of Newcastle community. So I wanna say congratulations and, and welcome everyone up. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Marion. All right. You first.
I'm the, I'm Kim McCray, I'm the Historic Preservation Chairperson of the Polly Cooper.
In the microphone.
Chapter. And hopefully I'm close enough to the microphone.
You have to be in front of it.
We can take it out.
Okay, and then, thank you. Okay, on behalf of the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution and members of the Polly Cooper Chapter of Chappaqua, New York, we are excited to present a community service award to Marion Williams. Marion's dedicated volunteer service to her community in the town of Newcastle is evidenced by her service in many ways. Specifically, her volunteering with the Take It or Leave It Shed, where Marion assisted in the organization's setup, receiving, organizing donations, helping, quote, shoppers and cleaning up from the day's activities. She volunteers for more than 125 hours each year. Additionally, Marion volunteers with the Newcastle Historical Society in many capacities. For example, working with local schoolchildren to coordinate tours in the research room, facilitating research of family history, maps, et cetera, that assist the public in their historical research. Marion volunteers with many other organizations in the town of Newcastle. Thank you, Marion, for your dedication to the community members. You are well deserving of this recognition. Donation in your name has been sent to Newcastle Historical Society designated to support the research room.
Thing to say, that is, this is an honor and I.
You can talk to the microphone.
This is an honor and I thank you. And what's important to me is that I get to work with Kari. Kari Weiss, who is a smart, kind, fun and superbly organized trustee of the Historical Society, especially on our project in the Greeley House, reorganizing the research room to make it more attractive and make the contents more accessible. The DAR does such good work researching and supporting history and genealogy. The DAR has an extra unrelated meaning in our family, since we have a daughter named Dar, who was quite startled when she first saw a brochure about the organization as a small child. Thank you, Kari, RJ. And I shall continue working to live up to this honor through the Newcastle Historical Society and Teo. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we all come take a picture with you too?
Thank you, Lisa.
We're gonna come down and take a picture with all of you. And Marion, I just want to say that you are a gem of our community and we are so lucky to have you.
Great, we're gonna squeeze behind you.
That is so much.
Thank you.
It would be your very special.
All right, sponge it, please.
All right, everyone, let's smile.
One, two, three, I can do a couple here, one. And then I still have to do the leases. Okay, that's one camera. Second camera, hold on.
Wait, your fingers in front of the.
And then one last one, one. Excellent. All right, and I just yours.
We need those pictures, I don't have seen.
One more, one more.
One more? One more? Okay. Okay.
One more, one more.
One more, sorry.
Did everybody hear?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Oh, one more picture.
Line it up, ladies and gentlemen.
One, do a couple over there, and then one last one, okay? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, you know.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Of course. Very experienced, thanks.
My daughter has.
Yeah.
Enough.
And she thought the scavenger hunt was fantastic, so it was never idea that was was a big hit. I learned a lot that was really in the last four days.
Oh, sorry, don't touch your house.
My son's. Of course. Did you know he was only sixty-one when he died?
Thank you so much.
I was like, no, thank you. Did you know that he had two children that died before he age and I was like, oh, that's very.
Congratulations.
Alright.
A lot. It's one of the trip.
Take it personally that no one wants to stay.
Great.
He's nice. That was lovely.
Yeah, don't take. She really is a a gem for in Newcastle and we're so lucky to have.
Um, so she fabulous. Interesting. You're doing something great.
Um, alright, so we are going to move. Are there any announcements? Okay, uh, supervisor's report. I just wanted to thank our recreation department for, you know, the um ragamuffin parade and everything they're doing this time of year to make our our kids happy, so thank you very much. Um, in terms of community corner, I just wanted to congratulate uh Daniel Dolch for becoming an Eagle Scout, which is a huge honor and a lot of work, so congratulations. That is actually great. Um, and then Gray Williams, we're wishing you a happy birthday. He can't hear us anymore, but happy birthday to Gray Williams, our town historian and wife of the hon and husband of the honoree here tonight. And also a happy birthday to our very own Jeremy Salan. We are honored that you wanted to spend your birthday with us tonight and we're gonna keep her as long as possible to prolong the.
We could have. I moved to adjourn.
I'd rather be.
Um, alright, so now uh anything from the town administrators report? Okay, so we are going to then move right to public comment and new business. If anyone has any public comment or new business who's sitting here, please uh come on up to the microphone. Alright, is there anyone online?
No hands with raise online.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so we um are going to move right to a public hearing um on a local law to amend chapter one twenty-three regarding full stop and yield streets. Uh, can I please have a motion to open that public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Alright, um.
Lino.
Lino, do you wanna talk to us about this?
I don't have the council local laws, manager advisor, I'm in my pack, so you prepare this one for me, so.
Okay.
That's fine.
Um, I know that the the chief, so we we received uh numerous, you know, complaints about um some various dangerous intersections and our police chief in the police department came out and and analyzed those intersections and they did propose that we amend uh the list of our streets that have full stop and yield signs on them to add a stop sign to Douglas Road, to add a stop sign to Ridge Road, to add two yield signs on Taylor Road, and to add a yield sign on Tripp Street. So we can open that up if anyone has any public comment on any of those additions. Alright, no one here. Is there anyone online who has a public comment?
No hands with raise online.
Okay, thank you. So um, I would, given that I don't anticipate this being um too contentious a change to our local law, I would recommend that we close the public hearing, leaving it open for written comments uh until noon on the uh Monday. The thirtieth. Can I have, can someone make that motion?
So moved.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Aye. Okay, and now we are going to just move to uh our resolutions. Holly, would you like to start us off?
Yes. I move to adopt the items one through twenty as listed in the consent agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move. I'm sorry. I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of one million six hundred and eighty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents listed on the summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detail report. Both dated October twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Actually issued a mail to each claimant listed on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. I move to appoint the following individuals as members of the beautification advisory board for a three-year term effective November first, twenty twenty-three through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Lori Morton, Jonathan O'Connor, Melane Britt Cabot, Michael Leder, Dorothy Vendito, Dawn Roan, Fran Osborne. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And thank you all for your service.
I move to authorize the hiring of Danny uh Quire and Jonathan Christopher Lohha for the position of seasonal labor within the Recreation and Parks Department at the hourly rate of eighteen dollars per hour effective October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Do you wanna move?
Sure. I move to authorize the promotion of Michael Belmonte to the position of heavy motor equipment operator within the Department of Public Public Works Highway Unit at the annual sal salary of eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-four cents effective October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals for the position of recreation attendant within the Recreation and Parks Department to serve as ski trip chaperones at the corresponding rates as indicated below effective January fifth, twenty twenty-three.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to accept the resignation of Superna Bannerji, Kimberly Carey, Porfirio Gonzowicz, Pat Pollak, Sean Smith, and Youngjun Yun from the Committee on Race Equity and Inclusion effective October twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. I thank them for their service.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No.
Hmm?
I said no.
You're not accepting the resignation? Okay. Alright. Moving on.
Can we keep on?
Uh, Vicki, do you wanna do this one or do you wanna do this and why don't you do this and Vicki will do that?
I can do this one. Okay, fine, okay. I move to adopt the resolution, uh, adopting negative declaration for the NG zero special permit twenty twenty-three dash five.
Can we move right to the whereas, oh, the uh resolve clauses?
As illustrated below.
A lot of whereas clauses.
Okay. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that after due discussion and deliberation, the town board as lead agency has identified all relevant areas of environmental concern and potential impacts arising from the proposed action as considered in light of the concept plans. The completed environmental assessment form and all the aforementioned documentation, recommendations, professional guidance, and public comment. Having assessed those potential impacts under the criteria set forth in new uh six N Y C R R section six one seven point seven C, the town board hereby determines there are no significant adverse environmental impacts associated with the proposed action and proposed project. Therefore, preparation of an environmental impact statement is not required for the reasons stated in the attached negative declaration as appended hereto. And it is further resolved that this resolution and the attached negative declarations shall constitute the town board's valuation of the magnitude and importance of project impacts and reasons in support of the term the determination of significance required under part three of the E A F. It is further resolved that based on the foregoing findings, the proposed action will will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment and therefore an environmental impact statement need not be prepared. Accordingly, this negative declaration is issued. It is further resolved that in the event that a proposed application for an NG zero special permit is submitted that is material different, materially different than as set forth in the concept plans or is determined to have environmental impacts that were not considered as part of the instant environmental review, that a further environmental review and a revised environmental determination will be required with respect to such application.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Do I do this? Okay, um, I move to adopt the resolution to adopt a local law creating NG zero special permit twenty twenty-three dash five. Uh, whereas application was made to the town board of the town of Newcastle um to submit a zoning change petition as uh presented in further detail in the resolutions, in the resolution packet. We'll go to. Yeah, now therefore be it resolved that after due discussion and deliberation, the town board of trustees of the town of Newcastle hereby adopts local law. The number is not there. Yeah. Local law um of twenty twenty-three adding a new provision to Town Code section sixty dash four three zero point zero, establishing a new special permit for mixed-use residential building that would significantly exceed current energy efficiency standards and serve as a model for sustainable development would be known as NG zero special permit as set forth in the form of local law submitted to the town board dated August fourth, twenty twenty-three. It further resolved that the town board finds that the local law adding the NG zero special permit will be beneficial to the welfare of the community by encouraging energy efficient and sustainable development of the property that would not otherwise be required under under the town zoning code requirements, as well as promoting affordable and workforce housing measures that will also provide significant benefits to the community. Be it further resolved that the town board finds that the concept plan presented by the applicant provides a model upon which it can rely as a basis for the proposed development of the property based on uh design features as further stated in the resolutions packet. And be it further resolved that to the extent any architectural or design features included in the concept plan are not included in any application for an NG zero special permit at the property, that it is recognized that pursuant to Town Code section sixty sixty dash four three zero B, when reviewing any special permit application, the town board has discretion to require substantial compliance with such features or require architectural or design features that are determined to be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the North Greeley Avenue District and that will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
We need we need the language for the last one.
Uh, we have it separate.
Yeah, I think we handed it out in the um.
Here, Jeremy.
And we also just um you should have something in your email for the Minkle Dam, the wording for the.
For leaving.
Dancing resolution.
Okay. Um. Whereas proposal has been made to establish a service award program for active volunteer members of the Chappaqua Volunteer Ambulance Corps, also running a C V A C. Um. As reflected below. It's a little different, huh? Throwing me a curveball on my birthday, sorry.
Sorry.
Um, should we just go to ten?
Can he skip down to the?
Yeah, I would just, what I would say for the motion is just really a motion to to propose a volunteer ambulance service award program. And that motion would be to set a mandatory referendum and vote on that low sap award program on Wednesday, December sixth twenty twenty-three from seven A M to seven P M in this assembly room in Newcastle Town Hall, uh, two hundred South Greeley Avenue, Chappaqua, New York, one oh five, one four, to determine whether such service award program shall be established effective January one, twenty twenty-four. And it's set set forth in this resolution and that would be the motion that you adopt.
Uh, so moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Have two best person.
Aye.
Aye.
Just for the record, this is a type, this is a type two action, so no further, no environmental notification is required.
And we are incredibly grateful for all your feedback, incredibly.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, very much. And uh, the board should have an an additional resolution with regard to Minkle Dam?
Yes, I'm just gonna let Mark make.
I've got it.
Hi guys, so my name is Mark Herschel. I'm the captain of Chappaqua Volunteer Ambulance Corps. I wanna thank everyone for passing this motion tonight. As you know, in New York State, EMS is not considered essential. But I know that in this town and with this board, we are essential. And just to give you some examples, just today, we've been on six calls. Five of them came between four thirty this morning and ten thirty-five this morning. Those calls included two falls, one patient who had COVID, one person had difficulty breathing, one patient with chest pain, and one person who was unresponsive. Another call was the afternoon for a person having heart palpitations. Last week, we had a number of calls, three of them involved, two of them involved, rather, people needing CPR and one involved a person having a stroke in her ambulance. So clearly, what we do is important and I know you recognize that. And having a low sap program will help us in a number of ways. One will help us recruit members, will help us retain members, and most importantly, will help us to motivate members. Hopefully, people will work harder to to earn their low sap and we think this will be a great addition to our uh our our community and we thank you very much for this. I should also add that I would have been have more people here from C V A C tonight. My members are actually doing training tonight on how to uh deal with opioid uh victims. So they're not here because they're training, but we all appreciate your efforts very much. And certainly I wanna thank Jill and Rob very much for all your efforts in getting this to this this day, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're happy. Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Um, alright, we have one more resolution. Do you have that?
Do I have it?
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, I move to adopt the following resolution, whereas town of Newcastle is proposing to decommission the upper Minkle Dam, AKA Croton Road Dam and Dyke, uh, by lowering the water level, removing stonework for passage of water, constructing a weir, establishing a channel, retaining sediments on site, limiting growth of native vegetation within the impoundment area. Whereas town of Newcastle's owner of the dam should declare lead agency status, commencing a coordinated review for this unlisted action in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Newcastle is declared lead agency for the purposes of environmental review with respect to the upper Minkle Dam decommissioning project. And be it further resolved that the town clerk is hereby directed to distribute letter of intent to involved and interested agencies. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, anything else? Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
So moved.
Well, there was no motion.
Right.
Oh, sorry.
He just moved.
So I so moved it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.